Order the twenty-fifth, July twenty-fifth, work session for the Dayton City Council.
Wonderful. Thank you Mayor and council members for joining today. We're going to start on Fund 410 to kind of finish up the second half of the CIP. Started last week. We ended up going in for a bit of detail, which was good conversation and well appreciated. So touch base on Fund 410, 414, and then 415. That is capital facilities, pavement management, and stormwater. And then at the end, if we have time, we'll go back and finish any other questions that you guys may have for other things that happened. Again, this is work session number two, so there'll be more sessions to come and more questions and items that come about. So I'll start on Fund 410. And we'll talk about the two generators. So those were replaced underneath fire. However, they're not really fire related. They're more facilities related. So those are grant, grant. Permanent generators that we received FEMA grant four and twenty, I think it was nineteen, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah, and we still have not, we still have not moved forward with that because the changing cost of the generators keep changing on us. So FEMA continues to just roll it over and say, yep, we're going to get them just depending on when. I know Jason, we've made some progress on it just more recently in the last few months. So we will hopefully see those this year yet, maybe even early next year. But we are still moving forward with those things and those are still paid for by a grant, majority paid for by grant, but the changing costs have been significant. So. I'm going to hand it off to Chief Hendrickson for the two items related to fire that are new. They are both in your packet, the last page of your packet that I gave you today for the CIP one pagers.
Um, so I put in 410, a constructive apartment training facility. Kind of hits on the whys within that based on needing a place to train. I'm looking at this as a benefit for the community of Dayton. But also looking at from an enterprise perspective, so some of the two are why funds. Currently, the fire service is basically limited to. For fire training, live fire training to the Able facility in Burnsville. And then the facility that we use currently in conjunction with Century College and the East Metro Training Facility. So there's nothing that really services the Northwest part of the metro.
Training facility in Maple Grove, is that just police?
That is just police, yes, David. So yeah, there was, that is a joint facility that burned down at one point. They rebuilt it. There was some discussion about expanding that. It's kind of died off in that capacity. Again, it was a Maple Grove initiative. Potentially putting that on, extending into their public works area that they have. But nothing has come forth from that. Nothing has come to fruition. So. We're very challenged to have a live fire training facility. We trained this last academy on Sundays because that was the only availability of that facility. My thought process is this, again, it's repurposing money. In theory, that was dedicated to buy land. This location or this would serve kind of two purposes. I think it would be an interim location or would be the same location. But we'd be able to build a small storage structure that I would need to use in the future. And then we'd be able to place an engine there. So we'd actually be able to push station three or in that capacity and use it in the interim as we were looking to do in the first place. These dollars obviously were dedicated originally, five hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the land. There is no, I think Zach sent out to everyone indicating that there is no cost for the city to use it or to repurpose it for fire station and training facility. So I looked at utilizing seven hundred fifty or the five hundred thousand originally allocated and then the additional two hundred fifty thousand that was authorized for this. That's kind of where that dollar comes from. As far as, obviously Zach can fill in these gaps a little bit. But the property, I think, is one point five value, something of that nature from Hennepin County. So the city obviously has the opportunity to purchase that piece of property if they like, for one point five, and then turn around and sell it for the same amount that you paid for it. Then collect taxes off that for the future. Zach and I sat down and looking at numbers in that capacity. Probably need a structure that would be right around ten million dollars to probably gain the same tax dollars revenue that we'll gain from the use of a facility over time. You compare that, Zach and I looked today just for comparisons, like Olive Garden was about two point seven million dollars. Probably, if there is a commercial property that was listed, that would be probably the value of like an Olive Garden, like Maple Grove. That's going to probably generate probably around, I don't remember.
I don't remember that dollar.
It was.
Like twenty grand a year.
Twenty grand a year. And basically what I'm looking at charging is it'd be two hundred, probably two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the facility, minimum of two hours. And then there would be a facility manager that would go along with that, minimum of two hours at seventy-five bucks an hour. So we're in the neighborhood of about five fifty, six hundred dollars for two hours. And then we'd bill accordingly after that. Anticipate that we'd be able to. Lot of interest because of, excuse me, location, the Northwest area where we'd be able to probably at a minimum rent it out for about one hundred to two hundred dollars a year. It's probably going to be greater than that, but I'm going to think conservatively versus saying that we're going to collect all this money and then we don't. But if we do a hundred hours a year, that'd be a somewhat of that twenty thousand dollars that you'd gain off of that two point seven million dollar piece of property. Also would minimize some of my operational costs as well. I know I talked about it at our graduation and City Hall wasn't very appreciative of it. But I did some training in City Hall and a bunch of mosquitoes the next day and whatnot. We just don't have a place to train. Very limited location. This also be an opportunity for law enforcement to train there as well. So it's kind of got it in the big picture.
What percent of our fire calls are on ninety-four a year? Do you know?
I don't know specifically on ninety-four. I could come up with kind of that geographic area, kind of to the south of what we're running. But I mean, from here to there, for me, if I get in my vehicle, it's probably twelve to fifteen minute response time with my license license to get to eighty-one and Dayton Parkway, if you will, that area.
The piece of property referenced that we're talking about, the fire training facility is that tax form of property down on the Dayton Parkway. The idea of putting a fire training facility is a good thing for the city overall. Makes sense operations wise, makes sense enterprise wise. It makes sense geographic wise because there's nothing in this area at all. Closest one is Maplewood. That's where East Training Facility is at, Maplewood. So that's the closest one to here. We obviously have a lot of interest around the communities. I know that other communities around us has expressed interest of doing the same thing of the fire training facility at this point. Trying to utilize dollars as best we can is always the best use of time and efficiencies. Again, the fire training facility is seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the cost to do and construct the building. And then there is minimal operations cost related to that. There'd have to be some revamping things after a few years to keep up with the times, but the ongoing operations costs of things wouldn't be hardly anything. There's already water there. We don't charge ourselves water. And so do you think this will bring in more, given your finance background and your current position? Do you feel this will bring in more revenue than it would if we built a commercial vehicle on there and taxed it? The only reason I'd say that, I'd be hard pressed to say that it wouldn't. And the reason why is because usage will always go up typically. And the first line will be zero or the least it'll ever be and it'll always go up. Whereas the tax revenue from the commercial building may go down over time. And the reason being is the value may go up, but the tax rate may go down. So they're going to pay less taxes towards the city of Dayton in the long term. Now that's going to, not now that you're going to eliminate a commercial building in town, yes. But if the tax rate continues to go down like it has over the last few years. They're going to, they're going to pay less taxes to the city of Dayton than a facility of the fire training facility. Again, that's going to go up over time whereas.
I don't see the tax rate going down much after this.
Yeah, it might not. Yeah, it may not. But if it stays the same where it is right now, we're going to continue to get the same dollar amount every year. Whereas the fire training facility would be at a minimum and then would go up over time.
Have you talked to any of the state representatives? I know every few, three or four times I've bumped into Senator Hoffman. He's mentioned that they, just let me know, we'll get you the money. Like he seemed very adamant to help support it. And so I'm curious. Yeah, through something because he, he understands the need for a training facility. Yeah. So I mean, then the city doesn't, doesn't have to eat all of it. If not any of it, hopefully if we get the state to fund it, that'd be even better.
I'm going to guess that that's probably not going to happen as much as Senator Hoffman would love to provide that for us.
Okay.
Because there's numerous other agencies that are requesting the same thing. There's people that have gone to the SPM, Spring Lake Park, Blaine, Monseau. And started down that road of wanting to get state dollars. If we put get state dollars for it. There's a process of, we talked about this when we were looking at trying to help Maple Grove put out that Brooklyn Center in some capacity. Is they'll give you feeder money to like do some site evaluation, that type of stuff. And then there's another step to get additional money. It would probably be a ten to twenty year process. And the great example of that is the Hero Center down in. Southeast, South St. Paul's, part of that. Ember Grove Heights, I think Ember Grove Heights. And that facility took somewhere between about ten years to get dollars. Now, that doesn't mean that we might not get something. And I think this is just kind of the beginning, if you will. I mean, the idea is that if I make an application like to FEMA. We would be able to say that, yep, we are footing this much of the bill. We're looking for this much of a grant, you know, if you will, Maple Grove. So there's opportunities for that, but they're also looking for some. Participation of the community that's going to be with it as well. So this would count towards like the soft costs a lot of times. I don't know what the visa one is. But the grants are a lot of twenty percent match in some capacity with city dollars. So. Being Senator Hoffman, I, I know he's asked and he, Travis brought him off to our last October when we were meeting at Jack Burns' place for training. We had a great conversation. It's just a matter of, if you can get it in the bill, you can write it in there and then if it stays there, I guess I'll use the example of our most recent grant where we didn't get as much as we had hoped. That's probably just the reality of it. So it's not to say that it's a dead end. I would still approach without a doubt and still approach FEMA. But I just want to be realistic about it. It's more of a, kind of like winning the lottery.
Maple Grove Training Center for the police got state funding and there's a stipulation that they have to have it open to the public for some reason. So the state grants can have stipulations in with it too.
The other question I have is, I know you've slotted for twenty twenty-five, but if we have the land, majority of the funding or two thirds of the funding, is there a reason we've slotted for twenty-five and not twenty-four?
No, it could be twenty-four. I mean, it's, Zach, you know, it's just a matter of getting the time to get it prepped and what's needed. But yeah, I mean, it can be sooner the better, obviously, because we would use it as soon as possible. We're looking at, I started the Northwest Suburban Fire Academy this year and that's an success, if I can say that tonight. And so other people are jumping on board with that. Probably it's West Suburban, Loretto and Hamel and then Rogers. But the idea is, and I talked to Zach about it today, is going down the road of more than likely bringing EMT in house. I'm going to make application to the EMS RB. So we'll have our own training site that's been approved by the EMS RB. Currently, right now, we pay about two thousand dollars per person for EMT. That investment kind of ties into this whole enterprise thing and the fact that. You get on the PD come and they can do their EMR with us. We'll do EMT. That'll be a part of the whole big picture of dollars that will come in. To support the training center as well as the fire department in the big picture. But it'll also save operational dollars for me and for Paul as well. So he doesn't have to send his officers, whatever. So we'll have our own instructors. And that gives us the ability not to have to, I reached out to Dr. Tangi today from North. He's happy to be our medical director. I just have to fill in the forms. Get, there's some capital investment. I'm going to assume maybe five thousand in my budget that I have to buy mannequins and whatnot. But that'll be used. And that kind of ties into that as well, kind of my big picture, my big plan of being able to bring all that stuff in-house and work with the other agencies.
Yeah. So again, just trying to get some feedback on things and thinking about things overall and long term, putting that in play. We put it in twenty-five, not because we need it in twenty-five, we could use it tomorrow, but knowing that it's going to take a little bit to get it going and get it moving. And try to get funding and so on and so forth from other places, it's going to take a couple of years. But it is a big project, but it would be very helpful today. Just it's, we know it's not realistic today. We're well aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay. We won't touch anything else that's way out there. Again, fire station number three is probably the biggest one that's in that play. That's in twenty twenty-eight. And we've pushed it out there and we're, and we're fine as long as we can try to get something moving forward with some sort of land acquisition at this point. That's been our number one goal. So. And which we don't have much of an update for unfortunately, I wish we had more of an update, but it's been slow going. So we will keep the council updated as we know more about land specifically.
Do we have a broker engaged for that?
We have, yes. It's one more recent, but yes, we do have. All right. Next thing, the big thing that'll change this year, we did talk about signage and we kind of have a signage amount every single year that we're looking at doing. As we slowly get more signage around the community to keep it more consistent and keep it consistent across the entire community as we have branding. We identified which signage was, would be best and next we go. City Hall signage was in twenty twenty-five. Likely that will not happen. We put it in twenty-five because that's what will happen. But there's no point in putting a city hall signage here when we're likely going to get a new facility, which is posted in twenty twenty-eight up on top. So. There's no point in putting that there. We'll probably move something up into that thought. Maybe it'd be more parks or more gateways. We identified it on here as city hall signage. And then after we identified it, I said, well, there's no point in trying to get there when we're going to get a new city hall in a few years after that. It makes no sense to put signage.
Is there any way we can, I mean, you've got a lot of big costs in twenty twenty-eight lined up.
Yep. So the, the best answer would be to try to do one large facilities bond. That's another bond falls off.
And that's why you did that?
Correct. Just to line up with that bond's coming off. Yeah, that's correct.
When does the bulk of that TIF come off?
Which one?
The.
The two Graco ones?
Is there two Graco ones? I thought there was just the one.
There's two Graco ones. There's Graco one and Graco two.
Okay.
So those both come off and I'm going to guess here twenty-six and then twenty-eight.
Okay.
So twenty-six would be the first Graco one. The second one would be Graco two, what we did when that was the portion for West Frontlake Road to have them redo that as part of their project. So that was TIF. So that TIF two was for the West Frontlake Road project. TIF one was, I say, TIF one was basically to get them here.
Yep, I was surprised.
Correct. Yeah. So. That was the, so that's the other one. The big one related to the CRG building, that will be done in twenty. It's a nine year bond. So twenty twenty, twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three, something like that. So not shortly after the twenty twenty-eight one, but that would be a significant help.
Yeah.
On the taxes alone, because I think that one's over a million dollars a year, just for our tax portion of that bond.
Well, the Graco one was too, too small.
Graco TIF, the second one was two point six million.
Yep.
And that's over. It'll, it'll be paid off in, well, we said it would give him ten years, but it'll be paid off in seven. So.
Yep.
How big's the first Graco on that? Uh, two million.
It was just under three, I think.
Yeah, it could be under three. It was in the two million dollar range.
Yeah.
But that one won't take very long either because we used a really low value when we did that building. So it'll be like a six year bond, a six year TIF. And that's why I say I think it's twenty twenty-six. We gave it to them in twenty nineteen. So. All right. Yeah. So those will all fall off. That's like, that's why twenty twenty-eight's been kind of the year we're looking for bonding. What we would do is we could always structure that bond to say, we'll pay a little bit now and pay more in the backend. Once the bonds fall off, we can kind of tier them. To say, once CRG comes off and once the other TIF districts come off, we can use those and tier them and say, okay, we'll, we'll backload the bond to pay them off later on. So, so that we don't have a giant increase of taxes in that year and that's obviously won't. So. But we do, we need facilities. Unfortunately, this is where all the facility dollars come into play. Talking about public works expansion, fire station number three, city, new city hall. Those are the three in this area.
Yeah. When you look at the pricing on these, how much did you increase from today's pricing from an inflationary standpoint? Do we feel this will actually be somewhat, I know you don't crystal ball and I get it, but they don't, but like do we ten percent, twenty, thirty, forty, where we've already seen the cost today?
I think we did per year, annual after this one for the fire station, I think we did seven percent?
Yeah, I think like something like that. I'll give you an example. Rogers is just going on for bid right now for theirs, three bays, training room, maybe some bunk rooms and a kitchen, and it's eleven million.
To what, twice today's at that point in time? Twenty, right? Are you assuming the same kind of facility or something?
He's going to be a little bigger.
Probably a little bit bigger. So I mean, we're probably, what it's in there, twenty, I think. Yeah, it's twenty-eight. I mean, that's why, I don't know, I'm sure thirty, thirty's going to be enough depending on what we all put in there, I guess.
And four other, other factors.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
The soil. I bet you it's my player.
I think you put any number in there and it'll be wrong. So.
Yeah, but my point is I'd rather, I'd rather be overestimating it than underestimating it in my opinion. But maybe I'm alone in that.
Once you decide it's a big honking number, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Correct. It's going to be a bond no matter what you do and whatever, it's going to be a bond. So when the bond comes in, it's going to be, how, how do we factor that bond? Into the overall tax rate and how do we figure it out to make it not have this gigantic tax burden hit all the residents and the businesses it does. So we'll figure that out later on and hopefully in a couple of years we can do some more guessing and.
Still smaller than the one they took out in two thousand and six.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yeah.
Try not to set records here. All right. The other one I want to talk about is outdoor storage for equipment. That is in your packet as well for CIP one pager. I'll hand that one off to Marty to explain what that is and what he's looking for.
Okay. Pretty much what is in the packet there, we, we have equipment that's outside all year round. And it's basically trying to get some protection for that. So it's not out in the weather all the time. It was a part of the initial design for the, the facility. But it got taken out just for cost reasons. So the idea was always to put it back in. And so that's why I put it in there. It's, it's going to be open on one side and closed on the other three with a reprogram to protect the equipment from the weather and the sun, all that kind of stuff.
Did you?
It is near the back of your packet.
Did you have that, somebody ballpark that? Because that almost seems a lot.
I took the original quote that we had from the building, from the big document, and that came in around seventy thousand. And so I added thirty thousand on it just because it's a few years old. So I haven't got a, a, a hard number on it yet.
So it's like a tent or what is?
No, no, it's going to be a, a, probably a steel, a steel structure.
Like what MinDOT's got off of eighty-one there. It's got the three sides.
Kind of like the salt shed, but larger.
No, that's the fabric thing. It's going to be kind of like the, the old salt shed, that type of deal.
It's going to be just open in the front though, no garage door.
Yeah, open in the front, no garage door on it, no. So it's just, you know, a tin structure over a wood frame and.
An implement shed, basically, yeah.
Yeah, similar to that.
Well, and I'm not saying, giving an opinion on it. I'm just, it's not those kind of fabric.
No, it's not going to be a dome. No, no. It's going to, what is it, twenty-five by, what is it on there? I can't remember. It says we've done. You're right. It's got to be better than mine.
Alternative shed?
Twenty-five by a hundred and fifty.
It's on there. Gotcha.
So it's kind of a longer structure, but we've got a number of trailers that just sit outside and the bigger wing and plow combinations that go on the loaders. We can't store them inside. They take up too much space and they're too heavy to put up on the mezzanine. So those need to stay outside all the time. So it's just a basic protection structure for those things.
Is that on grass or is that paved right now?
That's grass right. Uh, that's right on the edge of where the grass and the paving is on there. And I don't know if that's going to be the exact spot. That was the original spot for it.
It's kind of where you park everything that's packed there right now, right?
Yeah. So we'd probably butt out through the fence there, pave a little area and put it in there.
All right. Any other questions on the outdoor storage? Other questions on the fire training facility? I know we did not touch base on the office expansion for station two. That office expansion would be related to the assistant chief, if that was just wanted to move forward, would be to have that office space renovated over here. We have the space up top, so it's not, like, it's not there. We just have to renovate it so that you can actually use it as an office and not just a cold storage area.
I'm wondering, moving back to the, the training facility. I'm wondering, moving back to the, the training facility, um, you know, I think there's a once we've found the cost of, of the land, I think that changes the picture a little bit in how, at least how I would look at this, but I'm you know, I think you're making a, a pretty good case for it, but I'm wondering if you use any kind of a pro forma or anything, because this is kind of a new venture for us to take the stuff that Chief Hendrickson has been, you know, saying in terms of use and potential revenue and, and cost demand and.
I, I would, if there was interest in the council of doing forward, I don't want to spend time on something that's gonna be basically, I know it's not gonna happen, but if there's invested interest in the council wanting to move forward with the fire training facility and happy to do that, I just don't want to, again, put a bunch of rocks in an area and then say, well, we're gonna do that later. Yeah, no, later. So, I'm happy to do a pro forma and actually get some expenses. I did ask Chief Henderson to reach out to East Metro to say, what's your cost, that it costs to operate that thing? What's the replacement cost? How much does it cost to do things like replace sheet rocks and whatever else and concrete and whatever else that happens? And so he's working on getting those things for us, so those expenses of things that cost money.
Yeah.
And then how much are we gonna give as revenue and as being conservative as possible until we know really what we have? But yes, I most certainly could do a pro forma.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, and I think it would be helpful, you know, I think you've got a lot of the information already.
Correct.
Um, you know, that would provide kind of an easy way to do a little more analysis on it.
I suspect if those numbers work out, then I, I, I suspect you'll get some support. It's, I think the bigger question is right on the freeway. That's gonna be the bigger question.
Yeah, except, and we can, yeah, and we can look at that and figure out what's gonna be best for it. Again, we've kind of explored the area and option and feels like it'd be better than burdening a residential area with that kind of commotion, but again, it's also what people would call prime real estate, and that's
Yep.
where the dollar amount came from, from the state or the county.
Yeah, and if you could do a little more formal analysis on what it, you know, and I know it's, some of it's a wag in terms of what the potential tax revenue would be if we bought it and sold it.
Yep, I can do that.
What that would look like in comparison.
Yep, correct. So I did, I guess that we did do it today just to kind of see that, what does it cost for a, an Olive Garden? What, what's a, what's a Home Depot value lab? So rough guesstimates is best we can do is, I don't know if anybody knows who the Tile Shop is down on four ninety-four and.
Carlson.
Carlson.
Carlson, yeah.
Uh, that, that facility, that whole entire building that, that they're in is roughly a five-million-dollar building. That's the five-million-dollar valuation number. And Olive Garden is more like a two-point-seven-million-dollar valuation, and the Home Depot is a ten-million-dollar valuation. So if we're looking at it in terms of tax dollars, and not just total tax dollars, but tax dollars that come directly to the city of Dayton, I have to look into, okay, how much is each one of them, and then is the tax rate gonna change?
Is there enough space there? With how many acres are left for like a Home Depot or some big box store?
There is not enough space for, there is not enough space for Home Depot. There would be for a Tile Shop.
Yeah, yeah.
You could do that, um, and again, those are gonna be a five-billion-dollar-ish valuation somewhere in there.
And I think I'm with David, I, I want to see the numbers. I think we have to be good financial stewards of that land and can't make a decision without seeing that or know how to move forward with it, so I think that's.
And it could be some sort of unique use too, since it's, I mean, it's right there.
That's what I mean, yeah, I, don't disagree, and that's, but trying to look at it from, what's the best for the city overall and how can we help offset taxes too? Because that's, what that is, is an enterprise fund to directly offset taxes, so it's essentially a tax. Without actually being a tax, it would be using revenue from other cities to be paid for, generating funds that would help offset the tax for this community.
I've already talked to East Metro and then also to the other facilities, to get some actual kind of operation. Granted, it'd be a little bit different from the facility perspective, because both of those are concrete, and it's something a little bit different. Is that super, despite it's obviously quite concrete type stuff in place? But regardless, we can also get those operations.
Or if there's a pro forma, I can send it out on a weekly update of the council.
Cool, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, we'll do pavement management next. This one's gonna be more of a back and forth about what the council wants to really put as forward as possible. We did our best guesses staff to kind of put those in the areas that we thought were best needed, but these can be moved around and adjusted at any time. We can move them back and forth, up and down years. Um, this is not an all-inclusive list. If there's something else that comes up that the council wants to work on, we most certainly can. We put some best guesstimate numbers together. Jason is still working on getting final numbers for like full intersection improvements and so on and so forth. We use the five-million-dollar number, that's roughly what a roundabout costs. All-in cost for a roundabout is roughly five million dollars now. Um, to get, whether that's, that's including right-of-way, um, acquisition of land, the actual construction of it, rerouting traffic, mobilization, all this stuff is roughly about five million dollars per roundabout.
Two acre, or a two-lane roundabout?
Yeah, yeah, just, uh, the, like, the one, it would be on like, um, yeah, like the one on Pine View there.
Cause that one was almost three, but I think.
Well, that one was one-point-eight, give or take.
Plus some other things related to the roundabout itself and then the stormwater thing, that was another hundred-and-fifty-ish thousand.
There were, yeah, but those, those costs were gonna get eaten either way, but
Correct, yeah, so.
Having taken, but a lot of that was also the fact that we had to take land from like five hundred feet on either side.
Yeah, so the costs are roughly now about five million bucks right now for a roundabout. And that, again, that's probably a really high estimate from an engineer, because
Yeah.
it's not actually any engineering done on it, but as best as possible.
How do you really feel, Marty?
Marty knows all about, well, I guess, but again, that's why five million dollars is used. It's not an accurate number, it's just our best guess.
And, and these would be on, say, hundred-seventeenth, hundred-and-twentieth?
Yep, correct.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Hundred-seventeenth, North Diamond Lake Road, Dayton Road, trying to get money running. Roundabouts are nice because they don't stop traffic.
Yeah.
Um, and they just keep traffic flowing all day, slow them down, so that's what's nice about roundabouts. I know not everyone loves them, but they are the most efficient way to get traffic to slow down and also continue to move forward and to get people to access.
Great European invention.
Correct, it's a European invention.
Take your credit, the law's.
Alright, so we'll go through, and I'm gonna go through twenty-twenty-four's ones, the one we're planning for next year. We've already started the ones at twenty-three, so those are forward. Twenty-four, one-hundred-and-fifty-second Avenue's been out here forever. Scott would be arguing with me that he said he wants to get that sucker done ASAP. That is the one, so I'm gonna.
When's the water tower going in there?
Yep, it's a great answer.
Cause that, I think, so as you pull it up, just to have a know where it is, that should get done with you, the water tower. In my opinion, doing it before the water tower, put the water tower and then rip the road back up and put the pipes underneath it, makes no sense. And it sounds like we can't pre-fill, we can't, we put the pipes in the ground because you need outward pressure to, to go against the inward pressure of the, the ground around it, because I've asked, so that's my understanding of the situation, but I don't know if.
And where was that at?
So one-fifty-second Avenue is on the north end of Dayton here, northwest side of Dayton.
Yeah.
Fifty-second is the one small little roadway here. The ultimate water tower's planned directly at the end of it, so essentially.
Not in my lifetime.
Except the ultimate, this is the ultimate water tower. Doesn't mean it's gonna be done next year or in five years.
We could do one-hundred-and-fifty-second and it'll be shot by the time we get that water tower.
Very well might, and very well might not. Again, I, I like to predict the future, but I'm probably not right at any time, so. One-fifty-second is here, it is not in great shape. We all don't disagree with that. It's just only, it only feeds eight homes?
Something in that region, yeah, eight or twelve.
Eight or twelve, yeah. It's not very many homes in that area, but, um, roughly just to do, because you, we would not be able to just do a mill and overlay, we'd have to do a full reconstruct on that roadway unfortunately, at the rate it's at, it'd be roughly six-hundred-thousand dollars in today's dollars. There's one-fifty-second. LC Stevens Turn Lanes, those are next to LC Stevens Park. Uh, those would be able to expand the, the roadway there and make basically a dedicated left into that so that you could get in and out, and then obviously, I think there would be some way to be able to expand the roadway to have, where you make a, where you make the dedicated left, you'd have like a kind of a speed-up
Bypass.
bypass lane there next to it as well.
And this is all coordinated with the county for their mill and overlay next year?
I was gonna say.
As best as we can, yeah.
It always turns out so good when they add stuff.
I know, well, we'll do our best. If that's something, like I said, the council really wants to do in twenty-four, we will make sure that we coordinate with the county.
They did have a meeting last week to discuss their mill and overlay proj, project that's definitely going ahead next year. Um, they would, you know, go through all of their projects, so if this goes ahead, then we need to contact them and let them know that that project is gonna be happening next year in conjunction with their mill and overlay project, so we would kind of.
I know it's only a year away, but did they ever look at, um, their public, or their, their planning department? Do they look at the fact that we, we might want to add a turn lane in there and? And, I mean, it seems like they will push money if there's, if it's safety-related.
And like, we would have that discussion with them, I think, yeah. Let them know that, you know, we're doing this and if there's any funding from loans, if we can do it at the same time as their project, it would make sense as well.
Yeah, they did not reach out to us to say that they think it's a good safety thing, which I'm surprised they didn't, because we added an extra access point into LC Stevens Park than this last phase we did. And I'm surprised they didn't reach out and say, do you want to have a turn lane there when we're doing a mill and overlay project? But
Yeah.
I guess that would be foresight and not.
They may have never driven the road either.
They have never, that's right.
Well, I think, I think they separated their maintenance
Yep.
division versus their build-it division.
Correct, yeah.
So I've, I've got one.
So that's LC Stevens Turn Lanes.
So just to go back one to one-hundred-and-fifty-second.
Yeah, one-hundred-and-fifty-second, yep.
Yes, there's a lot of them in here that are street improvements, so I think as a city, and this kind of came up last time we talked, in every other city I've ever lived in, if your street gets improved, you get assessed to repair the street in front of your home. Is there a reason that we as a city don't do that?
Spend past practice, we don't do that.
We used to, because ours assesses new roads, if they want from dirt, uh, impairment.
We did, okay.
We used to. I think that was.
I think every city's a little different in how they want to fund things. Some will operate the assessment based on the fact that they don't put any money away ahead of time, as in they don't tax for
Yep.
pavement management. They'll just say, well, when that, when that road needs to be done, we'll just assess every property on that roadway. So it's a little different way of operations, but.
Isn't that the franchise tax?
Yep.
That we have, I mean, I know it's going to the interchange, but
Yep.
isn't that also intended as?
I've always had a hard.
It does, yep, the franchise fee goes directly to pavement management. That is correct. Along with the tax that we put away, I think it's seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand this year.
And then to the special assessment, there's additional engineering costs and staffing needs that would go along with that, so it's just different operations.
So, not saying we couldn't do it, but that just hasn't been the practice of this council, or at least councils that I've dealt with.
My preference is we do it the way we're doing it, because, well, like this one-hundred-and-fifty-second, you know, would be a ridiculous burden on those few residents that live there.
And they've been paying priority taxes this, this whole time, so, I mean, to me, a rebuild is already paid for by your taxes. I, I don't think we should be paving new roads without assessing. I, I'd never like that. You get a new road, it seems like.
I think that makes more sense than a rebuild road.
So you mean moving from like dirt to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a paved, example, do you think all of those homes that live on that road should pay?
Personally, I would, I would, but we, we don't do that.
Kind of tough when you, you know, where we just done zent about.
Yeah, there was, there's one, there's two homes.
Two, two homes on the, that could be tough for those two homes.
And the park and the rest of it, so.
Yeah, like, man, you can't, you can't, yeah.
You can't assess the parks.
Assess.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, I, yeah.
I have no preference either way, it was just, I had never lived in the city, it was managed this way, so it's just, I was just curious what everyone else's thoughts were on it. I'm just used to that, knowing that once every few decades, you're gonna get an assessment, and it's just gonna get thrown against your taxes and you're gonna pay anyways.
I will say though, that that might help push it out, because if residents are willing to put up with a crumbling road, because they don't want that little bit of whatever it is, um, like, I'm pretty sure, hopefully up here, we wouldn't have paved if there would have been a small hit. A lot of them didn't care.
Yeah, so then that puts illness on them, if you want it, you're gonna have to pay for it to some extent, until it gets to the point where it's, it's detrimental to public service vehicles, and then we have to make a call, but, I don't know. I, again, I have no preference either way, I was just more curious of everyone else's thoughts, so, thank you.
Alright, yep, and the last one is twenty-twenty-four, that's Thicket Hills, so this is an area that is just south of one-fifty-second. Thicket Hills is across the street from Daytona Golf Club, so essentially it turns into Thicket Hills, right, oh, I don't know if I can zoom in far enough. Right here. You can see the change in pavement, this is kind of more black, this is gray.
Yeah.
So this is where Thicket Hills starts. So we redid this, one-hundred-and-forty-ninth.
Okay.
A few years ago, probably.
Maybe it was even eight years ago or so?
No, it's not eight years ago, it's since twenty.
It's more than a few.
So more than a few, yep.
It's probably, everything.
Less than a dozen.
Yeah, correct, less than a dozen, more than a few.
Isn't it just the straight, straight that was redone?
Yeah, just the run, one-hundred-and-forty-ninth air, avenue was redone, and then Thicket Lane never got touched. So basically, if you drive this, again, this is a area that has roughly ten homes on it, but it is patched to the max. I know that Marty's crew does a great job, but when you drive it, it looks like a bunch of patches are just thrown around, which, again, there's nothing wrong with what it is, but it could be redone, it probably should be redone based on.
Sooner or later, you run out of good pavement to attach the patch to.
Except, you did a great job. Not saying anything about the guys and the work done, it's just, it looks like a bunch of patches.
Johnson's like that. Um, it is just, it's more patched than not right now.
Yeah, so, how confident are we with those, that four-hundred, two-hundred number for those two, Marty?
Oh, is that one too?
Second, how confident are we on those, that four-hundred thousand and two-hundred thousand for Thicket Hills and the, oh, sorry, the six-hundred thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-second and Thicket Hills?
I think that, I mean.
Thicket Hills would not be a full reconstruct. It would just be a mill and overlay, it would be. So it wouldn't be a full reconstruct, whereas one-fifty-second would need a full reconstruct.
Yeah, I, I think those numbers are pretty good.
Pretty close, I bet.
Thank you.
So I, um, I don't know that I've got any concern with any of these, except that and for sure, the dollar amount is, you know, something that I think we've gotta just plan on, but when we do give that, get that pavement condition assessment study back, you know, I don't know if they're gonna mark these the worst ones in red or what their scale's gonna be of condition, but, you know, it, it may be some other one.
These may, these may adjust and change, yeah.
It turns up as the top three.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, so I think that the dollars are probably something we should plan on, but
I highly reply.
I'd like to reserve that we, you know, get a look at that report and prioritize.
Most certainly, yeah, like I said.
Or at least re, you know, consider, are these the right ones?
I think that, that's actually at the start, I mean, these, these are flexible, we
Yeah.
we had to go with what we got at the moment, knowing that that, uh, report will come in and that may change everything, but.
When will that come in?
Uh, I think September.
I think it's September, yep.
And when does this get finalized?
This gets finalized in December. So we can mostly change things, adjust things before we, after we get done things, so. This is our best, best guess, that we could be totally off and be.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that's, I, I think that that's, the number is
Yep.
the dollars make sense, it's, we just make sure we're putting them on the right thing, the highest priority things.
It might be that we're spot on with these.
We might be.
I think one-hundred-and-fifty-second's gonna be pretty high on that list.
Um, uh, the next ones in twenty-five, which are two new ones that we added this year, the signal improvement in southwest Dayton is a new one that I learned about from Jason Quisberg, is on the south side of the Dayton Parkway, in our little corner triangle that we have between Rogers and Corcoran on Brockton Lane and Dayton Parkway. There will need to be a signal improvement done, uh, at the intersection that is, and you can't even really see it right now, but basically it's carved out here, you can kind of see the little bump out right here. Um, there will need to be a signal improvement done at this intersection, which.
What's down there right now?
Right now, there's nothing.
So why does it have to be a signal improvement?
Um, because there's gonna be access on both sides once the development goes through, if they're developing.
Can we make the developer pay for their own signals, for their own areas?
We can do our best, but, um, yeah, Jason wasn't so sure we could make it on them.
I think you'd have a hard time with that.
Um, unfortunately, we could probably have them, and that's why we did assessment and developer. We were hoping that we could have them done by them, but again, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do it all on the development assessment related to those projects, but, um, we can do our best. Again, we would be part of that assessment.
You said on both sides.
Yes, well, no, not necessarily right away, but both sides as in, right now, you have the concept plan that you'll see tonight for the Roeburg property.
Yep.
And then you've already seen a concept plan slash, we are working on a preliminary plat for Shanie Group, which Shanie Group owns both sides of the road.
But wasn't that just for like roads?
Yep.
I suppose roads is enough, that's access.
Unfortunately, that's access, which means you now have to take a left and now you need to.
Some, which is a controlled intersection.
Um, three, seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand bucks.
Say a million?
That's just for, that's a signal. So a signal with all the intersection, again, I, I really hated it, because I said, well, what's the point of having a signal on Brockton and then a signal there, and then a signal out at the top of the hill, but. And then, yeah, and then you got it, yeah, so it's five signals in a mile.
Six within that stretch between eighty-one and.
Didn't, I wasn't impressed by the response, but that's what the answer was, unfortunately.
And what's the deadline to get those in? Once roads go in, or once they get an occupancy permit, or one spot?
Um, I believe it's once I don't remember what Jason had mentioned, I think it's once roads go in.
Yeah, I'm.
I think once access is able to be on, available, and roadway is able to be used for
That makes sense.
public use, correct. Now you have to have an intersection for when to allow people to take a safe left out of both sides. Not fantastic news, like I said, that's why it's new this year.
Cheaper than a roundabout.
Love it, but it is cheaper than a roundabout, so, um.
I mean.
Take what we can get.
Right on lane.
Correct, yeah, so.
Don't the lights cheaper than a roundabout?
Yeah, I agree. So, okay, so that's just saying, no, but that's.
Put four stop signs there, is that enough?
That'd be even cheaper.
I mean.
And that's fine with me. I don't care. It's only going to affect those people who are going out of their own lane, but whatever.
Have to put the flashing ones in there.
Okay, yeah. Those, you don't have to stop that.
You wonder what that roundabout would cost then, though, because you wouldn't have to buy any right of way, would you?
Nope, we have it. We have the right of way.
All you're doing is adding the.
Just changing the road design a little bit?
Yeah. We could ask and I can look at it and see.
Yeah, ask.
I mean, it'd be better than having six stoplights. We're just talking about.
I did, it does the screen.
Especially the, the, the two roads are never, I mean, yeah, they're not going to use for a long time.
Yeah, if you want to create flow, like, this is.
South more into the docks.
Yep. The discussion we just had.
Yeah.
I will ask Jason when he gets back and see how much his roundabout would be. Again, I know we have the right of way.
Feasible, yeah.
If it's even feasible. I know we have the right of way for it, so that would be, there's no cost there. The next one we're talking about is the intersection improvement. This one came up through conversations with just in general, um, which is Rush Creek Parkway in Fernbrook. Um, we talked about this one, I think, a couple of times, just at council level and or within staff about this intersection. And we tried to approve a few years ago with the Sundance Green, Sundance Woods development. Didn't happen. Something happened with Three Rivers, something happened with Hennepin County. I don't know the backstory. I don't know the history, whatever.
So I think it is fair, though. Didn't you tell me, though, that the developer offered to put a roundabout there?
Yes.
So just so, I think it's important, since this is a technically public meeting, the developer did try.
Correct.
And he said he wanted it.
Yep.
But through, between Three Rivers and the county, they couldn't say yes to it.
Correct.
He was going to put it under, under.
Another pass.
Under.
Yeah. Yep, they wouldn't, which I think is important for people to know.
Another pass for pedestrians, sorry.
That's especially.
So that was actually going to be further down, I think technically in Maple Grove.
I think, I think there was going to be two. At the very start of it, there was going to be one here and one further down.
Yep.
Okay.
And they deferred because they wanted the one further down and Free Rivers Park District.
Okay. I'm not even sure what the one further down does.
It connects to Maple Grove, not to Dayton. I, the only reason I bring it up is because oftentimes we hear people comment and they want us to fix that. And it was, the city tried a long time ago and the Three Rivers Park District and the county said.
I think it was, yeah, I don't remember what year, twenty fifteen maybe?
Yeah.
Twenty sixteen, something like that around there, right?
Yeah, it's going to be something in that.
Um, well, yeah, the railroad did try and ask and between Hennepin County, Three Rivers Park District, we could not come to.
So we're proposing there now.
So proposing there would be a roundabout.
Why don't we just put lights there?
We can. It would be cheaper.
I mean, because I think if it wasn't part of the problem, it's where the parties don't want to get any of their corner of that land to make a roundabout and then.
Offset everything.
The county doesn't want to shift the roundabout over and have the road curve. So we're going to end up there, I think, if we get anything. Unfortunately, with lights, I don't think it's ideal, but just given, we can try the roundabout.
That might make more sense, though.
Given the history of everything, I think we're going to be hard.
We can look at lights. The one point five million is for a roundabout.
And, well, the county, help us with lights versus a roundabout.
That's what I don't know. Right now, we have fifty fifty in there for county and city contribution.
I don't think they like lights.
I don't like the light, either.
I think they stop traffic. They like traffic.
If they don't like a roundabout there, we have no other option. We put stop signs up, they don't like lights.
Would they let, put lights there if we don't meet warrants? Is that going to be an issue for us?
That might. Um, I know.
What's to meet warrants?
The county worries about how many warrants are on, which AK means accidents, injuries, pedestrian problems, whatever. So basically, they have to meet warrants in order to get it on the radar.
Yeah, you got to score so many points before they.
Correct.
Has to be so dangerous of an intersection.
Correct. Which is unfortunate, but that's why.
They're very analytical.
Yep. It's versus territorial and eighty one, where that, we all know it's a terrible intersection.
Seems like there's enough accidents there. I mean, I haven't heard about any deaths, but.
There's got to be accidents. I don't, you have to ask the chief.
Rush Creek and Fernbrook?
Yep.
Yeah.
Most of them are north of there.
Okay. Unfortunately, yeah, that's kind of where we're at. All right. Uh, so that's twenty five. Again, these can all be moved around and adjusted. Not saying this is the final area. Um, twenty six, I.
On that end of the question, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but I thought on the county's scoring website, North Diamond Lake and Dayton Road was the worst intersection.
It is, because there's been one death there.
I think there's a couple, two deaths.
Yeah.
Okay. But we're suggesting not doing that one first, so we disagree. I'm just asking, do you disagree with the county's assessment of that being the worst intersection?
No, we, uh, said that that's two county roads, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how much the city wants to contribute to two county roads. That's, that's where we're at. We'd love to contribute exactly zero. We put in there twenty eighty, which I thought was very generous of us to put twenty eighty.
We have one of those for it.
Um, that is correct. That's why twenty eighty makes sense. I'd like it to be a hundred zero, but it'd be realistic.
Twenty eighties, okay.
Twenty eighties, not bad. Um, so that's twenty twenty six. And not saying, again, that any one of these are more important than the other one. They're all terrible, but we didn't, with the county, we know that the county's at least two years out before they'll even do anything. So we put it in twenty six because it hasn't been started today. We started conversations today. We're not going to have any progress until a minimum twenty six with the county. And so that's why it's in twenty twenty six and not earlier because we know that just, that's how long it takes them to do their process. And being that we're not on their five or 10 year schedule, yep, that's how it goes. Uh, Troy Lane eighty one is the same thing with twenty twenty six. That is going to be an intersection that we are going to have problems with and we know we will. However, the county will not agree to it. Um, so Troy Lane is on the bottom of Dayton, right next to the Parkway. So the Parkway is right here. And Troy Lane is the next intersection where Pro Cart Indoors is at. This will be very, very busy once inland and MTL are up and running. MTL is the large trucking company that will have hundreds of trucks through there every day. And they'll be trying to take a left onto eighty one and will be unsuccessful. So we told the county that they will have a bad intersection and they told us two pounds ain't. So that's where we're at. Um, and we will see how that goes because.
How much do we care?
Um, we put fifty fifty and we took it back, thirty three sixty seven.
Won't MTL have access to West?
They will have access to West Frontsec Road. So they will hopefully push their trucks that way. However, if there's a free lane in front of them, they'll likely go forward, go straight versus taking a left and going down one hundred eighteenth Avenue is what we're calling that roadway that's going to run, that is currently there, runs from, along these tree lines, basically.
Yeah, printed status.
Right to the West Frontsec Road, yep, goes right here. And it's already in today. You can drive it right now and it's.
So this three million is.
That is total cost. So we would put.
And you're, you got a cheater column there that says thirty, thirty seventy?
It's in the right, the left hand side under the name of it.
Oh, okay.
City, county, and then we put, when I say city, county, I put the slash in there and I put the two percentages back and forth. Thirty three sixty seven. So we would pay one million of the three million dollar cost. That would be the hope. The idea is that we'd like to pay zero again, but again, we know that there is an intersection that is our portion of that. And so two thirds of that is the county and one third of that is us, so.
Well, as part of the thought process of that too, is that by getting traffic to go that way, or making each traffic go that way, we're removing traffic from other city roads that then won't have to replace as much because there are any semis down them.
Correct.
So I feel like, I don't want to pay for any, don't get me wrong, for being honest and realistic about it, there is a benefit to that being done.
Yep.
To our own.
I think it's a benefit for everybody there on that intersection because you're going to have an eighteen wheeler try to take a left in good day traffic. Um, best of luck. Best of luck. So again, not saying they will, and hopefully they push them down the West Frontsec Road, but can't predict what a truck driver will do unfortunately.
So they didn't make that a right and right. I'll make that an actual intersection.
Making an actual intersection. So there will be, they'll, what will have to happen is it'll have to be widened to allow two lanes through that hallway so that you can back up traffic enough to get to the next stoplight.
Gotcha.
So it'll be two lanes essentially at, at the Parkway and then that two lanes will continue all the way through to Brockton and then there'll be a stoplight in the middle there between Brockton and the Dayton Parkway. Again, if we want to make it a roundabout, maybe that'll be easier too. I, I don't know, but.
Roundabout on eighty one.
Yeah. Not saying it's going to be great, but again, the cost is relatively the same for three million dollars because the three million dollars includes widening of the roadway and the light itself.
State, state puts them on sixty mile an hour roads.
They, they're called straight throughs.
Twenty twenty six as well. Um, and I don't, this is again, way out there. Not really sure it's going to happen or not, but one thirteenth avenue will eventually be severed at, um, Dayton Parkway based on the amount of traffic that goes along here. So as this continues to get busier, this intersection right now is being approved and basically it's a straight T now. However, at some point, the county will say that it's too many, too close to the road, too close to the intersection at eighty one and the Parkway, you need to close this intersection. At that point, we will have to make a decision on how we get access to one thirteenth. Um, when we sever this, that, there's two parts of it. One will be improving the already road that's there, which isn't in great shape by any means, but it is there. Um, that will also include, include a portion of water and sewer, which is on a separate page in this CIP document. And then the other part will be the connection point extension. Either it will go around the end here and up and over and then back this way. There is a roundabout right where my cursor is at in the middle here. So they'll come back and around and go around the businesses. Or we've had conversations with this landowner. I'm going to blank on his name right now. I don't know why. Um, what's his name?
Spanier?
Yeah, Spanier, there you go. Um, and possibly make this a T intersection here and come straight up. Spanier has expressed interest as possibly revamping his operations there. And as part of it, we could purchase part of the property and just run that road straight north. I think it'd be more, make more sense to do a T operation there versus having to go all the way up and around the businesses. But again, we can't force anybody and don't really want to force anybody to sell their land for a roadway. We will work with the landowner to make it happen. Again, he's expressed interest in us to try to, um, basically revamp his operations. And we said, we'd be happy to help you do that and then also purchase some property if you're willing to maneuver some things around. He said yes. So we'll continue to work with him as we go forward.
Because, uh, so we talked about this a couple times, but the, uh, the property to the southwest there that they're, they keep bonds and are on.
Yep. Um, this is the, I'm blanking on it.
Stensley?
Stensley.
Stensley property, yep, but somebody else, Enclave is trying to develop.
Yeah. But a lot of the issues with that always stem from the fact that they don't have an out, they don't have a, uh, through. And I think it's been suggested a couple times to maybe connect that to one hundred and thirteenth. So then we can do that.
Yep. Yep. So that has been discussed with the, um, current tenant or current enclave. As I say, that we could have them do basically a straight in here so that they could eliminate. Um, the county does not like a three legged intersection here in this north end of eighty one and that development. They don't like the left hand turn anything. So we said, do we do allow a right and right out? They said, maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
And our maybe is, in my words, probably a no, but they said maybe. They didn't say no. So we have the, a backup that says, would you be able to, we have reached out to both of these.
Okay.
Owners of these properties here to say, would you mind us going through this? It's a little wet there, but there's nothing there that would be taking it up. And it would turn into a, basically an access point for that apartment building to allow them access to one thirteenth. Essentially, it would then allow them access to the Parkway and down much quicker than it would be to go down territorial.
Well, then it could also let us be guide that property or open up the guidance.
Yep.
Because right now it, it can only do residential the way, the way it's.
Correct.
And even then, they're struggling.
That is correct. Yeah. So we've not seen anything from Enclave. Again, we've had conversations with them just very preliminarily, but we did mention that the last time we talked to him, we said, would you be willing to build a roadway from one thirteenth down? If we could get the easement or right of way through there? And he said, possibly. So, yes, a great point and agreed. All right. Uh, the other couple of ones in twenty six, which we put in there, these would be assessment developer ones. Um, Dayton Parkway Extension, which is one seventeenth East Frontsec Road. That is the north half or the portion between one seventeenth and East Frontsec Road. Going to be based on developer. And we're getting twenty six. Again, it could be way off. We could be in twenty eight. It could be twenty four. I don't have an answer. We just put twenty six because we had to put it in there. Essentially, we put all of the roadway projects in here, even if it's not going to be paid for by us. That is one hundred percent developer. The last one is territorial road. That's the Parkway to Brockton. That is the portion that is basically right in front of Adessa. Right now, water only goes to right about here in front of Adessa. And we've had some expressed interest in a few different landowners down this way, but they have no water and sewer down here. And so if we did water and sewer, there's no reason to not do the roadway at the same time. So we did water and sewer and then running the roadway down the entire area, white, all the way down to Brockton. So that territorial road is Brockton to the Parkway. Again, we'd redo the roadway and then also redo water and sewer at the same time.
Isn't that mini storage?
Yes. Mini storage in this area, I think it's right, I think it's right here. It's right here.
Siddle up to the auto sales.
Yeah, E and Y Auto Sales is right here. Or the proposed E and Y Auto Sales. We don't have anything at this point. Again, that's just the current owner of the land. And I think it's right here.
Yeah.
Which is Dedicated Auto Sales.
Is that the one that I talked to you about today?
Yes. Yep. That's where the mini storage is going, that they're looking to move forward with.
Yeah, they're looking at it before because I got contacted by the fire protection or the electrician for the fire protection department. So I was surprised to hear from them. So he asked me what fire problem, so that's coming.
We have not heard anything from them since the development came through a few months ago or more.
Probably collecting all the loose parts now that they know what they're going to do.
Um, twenty seven, Pine View and Dayton Road. I think everyone knows where that one's at. Again, kind of get, um, all of our ducks in a row with only so many dollars to go around. I'd love to do all these intersections right now, but, um, we all know that it's only so many dollars. Again, we'd like to have the county participation in this. That's why it's out in twenty seven, because if we get them to participate, we'd rather have them participate in North Diamond and Dayton Road before this roadway, just because of warrants and needs and stuff. But we're looking at a thirty three sixty seven percent split on Pine View and Dayton Road. Um, that would be in a full roundabout there. Um, we could put something in there, um, related to stoplight or a stop sign, but county doesn't love that idea by any means, so.
You need a lot of fill to make that a roundabout. You need a lot of fill to make that a roundabout.
Correct. Oh, yeah, there'll be, and five million dollars could be a short number. I, I unfortunately don't know.
Yeah.
Um, County eighty-one and Territorial Road, um, we'll go back to the south and it's on the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is for a stoplight, so we're looking at putting in, that is right next to where we were just talking about with Enclave. This, um, roadway will be redone or removed or moved, moved. Territorial Road will go south, shift south a little bit with if and when we ever get a developer to do this property here. Territorial Road will be revamped. We have the right of way out there. This allows for backing on this roadway. We'd love to put an intersection here, some sort of intersection improvement, stoplight, roundabout, something. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for a stoplight. That's what we have proposed at the moment. Um, again, we have enough right of way and stuff to do all that stuff there, but seven hundred and fifty thousand bucks for a stoplight seems to make sense, um, at this intersection. Again, we could do something differently, but, uh, I don't want to put too many eggs in one basket when I don't know we're gonna get anything, cause this one doesn't meet warrants at all, um, per the county. Historic Village Street Improvements, I think this is just the back roads of Historic Village. These are kind of in rough shape. They haven't been touched in many years. I don't know. Marty, I don't know. You probably know more about the Historic Village here than I do, only cause, you know, private.
There's a seal coat project done down there in twenty fifteen. That's kind of the only real treatment that that's had since two thousand, I believe, when the water and sewer project went through there, so it's not in great shape. There's gonna be a lot of, uh, concrete sidewalk replacements and, and curb and gutter work in there as well, because it's all, you know, in, in tough shape. It's sunk in a lot of places with the trees in the boulevard, the sidewalks pushing up, so there's gonna be quite a lot of work involved in that. And again, the, the, we will probably get a lot more information when we get that survey back about the actual condition there, but it's definitely something that's gonna need some, some kind of treatment, whether it's mill and overlay, um, or what that, that's gonna be in there.
Correct. So again, that's twenty-seven. Once we get closer out and hopefully, once we get this payment management thing back in September, we'll really have a better idea of where we need to move things to and whatnot, but again, this is staff's best guess. Uh, Nature's Crossing in twenty twenty-eight, that's the neighborhood that's basically Champlin. It hasn't been touched since two thousand and four, um, when it was built.
I think we're just looking at phase one there.
Yeah, correct, yep. So just do, I can't remember if it's just this bottom portion or the top portion. I can't remember what portion.
I think it's down to Basswood there, that circle from Basswood.
Yeah, Basswood here.
Yeah, I think it's down there and then to the south.
Okay. So that's addition one of this, this would be done. And again, we'd look to do the second addition later on, a couple of years after that.
I thought those roads were in pretty good, pretty good shape, so.
Uh, again, um, it's had some work done there. It's a combination of both things. The, the concrete is, is getting tough over there again, and we've still coated that, um. I think, I think it's due for, for some kind of a treatment, uh, probably a mill and overlay over there, I would say. For that first, first phase, I mean, that would've been down for quite a long time over there, even.
I was trying to remember, yeah.
Uh, when I started here in two thousand and six, they were just starting to develop that man.
It's probably about right, yeah.
So it's about twenty-three years or so from when it was put in, so. Well, it doesn't get a lot of traffic. Again, that may change. We might say that's in great shape when we get the payment management thing back and say, okay, we're not doing that for twenty years, five years after that one, so. It might change again. Um, Troy Lane, this is the portion of the roadway that would be, we could maybe figure out if we could work with the county to say if they do the intersection, maybe we could do Troy Lane and move it up sooner than, than later with the.
Do a trade on Troy.
Troy Lane is the portion of the roadway between MTL and eighty-one. And we could possibly look at moving that up or backwards, depending on how, how the pavement comes back at, but this is, there we go. The pavement isn't in great shape next to Pro Card Indoors, so the intersection improvement is down here on eighty-one and Troy Lane. Troy Lane itself is not in fantastic shape. Um, and once you get a bunch of trucks rolling over it for a few years, you may or may not have worse shaped pavement than you have.
So I thought, okay, I thought as part of that development, they were gonna do something.
They did not. They, they built one hundred eighteenth Avenue, which is basically at the top of Troy Lane.
Connected it.
They connected it over and put a brand new roadway here. However, there is no adjustment or any, or any, um, work done on Troy Lane itself as part of that. So that again is more or less a possible. It maybe goes back without. Um, the last one was Rush Creek Extension and Territorial Road Intersection. And that is the portion that is down the other end of Rush Creek Parkway, which is right here. So basically Rush Creek Parkway comes from a one-lane divided boulevard down to essentially a driveway. And ends right here.
Sneaky driveway.
And you can tell it's a kind of a sneaky driveway-ish thing, but this does get quite a bit of traffic and may get more traffic as we have more development down here and continue to have more development. If we improve the other end of Rush Creek Parkway and the Fernbrook side, and we also have the development in, um, Maple Grove that we're looking at as well, that you have to be cognizant of that they are developing these hundred and twenty acres down here. We may have more traffic on Territorial Road going north on us, so.
Isn't that the intersection that we share with Maple Grove?
That is correct. This is the intersection we share with Maple Grove. We put it all in twenty thirty, twenty twenty-nine, cause we'd love to do something with it sooner, but we just know realistically that I don't know what we can do without having.
Well, at least everyone.
Yeah.
Really on board.
Do we know everything that they're planning on doing with territorial Maple Grove?
Uh, Maple Grove. So from what we know so far, what I can gather is that Territorial Road will be revamped, essentially, I'm gonna kind of do the rough mark here, roughly in this three patch here. And heads straight east-west. So they're going to sever this portion down here. We're on this east-west. I don't know what they're doing with this roundabout here. I'm unsure at that point.
That was supposed to be temporary anyways.
Correct, yep. So they're gonna run Maple Grove Parkway to Territorial Road, wherever that ends up being, whether that's here or whatever.
That was a straight line. All the way to Fernbrook.
They, they are not doing that portion yet, so they are trying to get the county to help them with that.
Oh.
Although the county's not helping them with it. So it's not just us.
So it makes you feel like a Maple Grove.
Correct, yep. So Territorial Road will run east-west here. Maple Grove Parkway will connect up to Territorial Road. I'm assuming maybe they'll move this roundabout up here or something. I don't have an idea. And then essentially, long-term, it will continue on the same path all the way up into Fernbrook.
Yeah.
And once the Territorial Road up to Fernbrook will be a connection point and directed into Fernbrook, this will then turn into a local roadway. Fernbrook will turn in, and Maple Grove Parkway will turn into a county roadway. And Fernbrook will then be directed, directed right down Maple Grove versus having to go down and then take a right on eighty-one and a left on Maple Grove Parkway if you want to go to Target or anything, so.
But the, the territorial going west is gonna staple it.
Yep, the territorial running east-west right here will be here for now until further north. So it's just going to be pushed up basically north. I don't know why they're removing it north. I don't know if that's for the development purposes or for the purposes of the better alignment, so that they can have a better angle.
Engineering style.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Straight lines, so.
Straight lines.
It will be severedish here and then run east-west. At least that's of mine, though.
And so right now, in their plans, we don't have any plans to, where it actually meets Rush Creek. I mean, that, that goofy T there.
Here, talking on the left here?
Yep, yep.
We have no, we have, well, we tried to do it years ago.
Yeah.
Right now, we'd love to take this and the ultimate plan would be to take Territorial Road and just kind of make a swooping curve here and connect it up this way.
Yep.
And then take Territorial Road on this side and run it in.
T it.
T it out, so that the traffic would essentially go from Rush Creek Parkway right down to Territorial Road and then out to eighty-one and then run more east-west.
The deal is, he, he just wants too much money for the land.
Correct, exactly. That is correct.
I wonder if that's tempered now, but time's gone by.
Maybe. I have not had.
Cause it would be nice to see what he wants for it and straighten that thing out.
It would be great to get straightened out, cause then it would eliminate this horrendous intersection and then this horrendous deadly curve here essentially, cause everyone comes around this curve doing fifty. Cause you can't, it's territorial. That's what we have for payment management. Again, those may change drastically, but, um, at this point, we don't want to make too many changes. I don't know until we get that paid. So that's a great point. Stormwater, not a lot of changes here. We'll touch base on this quickly and then we'll be done. Stormwater, the only two changes would be Southwest Dayton Regional Stormwater Ponds, which is related to the development that we're dealing with right now with Rover. And the development that we have tonight on the agenda is that we'd like to do some sort of larger stormwater pond in that area to be able to help all the.
Regional.
Regional ones, so we don't have a bunch of small little stormwater ponds and make the land as best used as possible, only because there's limited land down there that's actually usable. So that's the one. And then Dayton Meadows Wetland Bank, that is directly right next to, that's a piece of property we purchased down, uh, same area, Southwest Dayton there, right next to Roberg. Purchased that piece of property for, for stormwater on the Dayton Parkway interchange, and we'd like to turn that into Wetland Bank. We have not invested any money into doing that as Wetland Bank. So what we would do is we would make it a Wetland Bank, that's the idea, work with the developers, see if we can combine parcels and make the Wetland Bank bigger, then we could sell Wetland Credits to other communities and that would make a profit on stormwater. Put a little money in, we get quite a bit of money out, out of it, cause Wetland Bank credits are pretty hefty. Those are the two changes we have. Otherwise, we basically just bumped everything out to twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Diamond D O surveys, Diamond Lake vegetation, Grass Lake feasibility study, all things that we could do. We have to do them? No, we don't have to do them, but we just pushed them on another year. We want to continue to move forward with those things. We most certainly can, but we have money in the stormwater fund to do it, but at this point, they're not gonna get done in twenty-three, so we pushed them out to twenty-four, cause it's just not gonna happen.
Did you say, what was the Grass Lake feasibility? What is that?
Um, I wish Jason was here for that one, cause it's related to the watershed.
Yeah.
And how Grass Lake is looked at as a wetland slash.
Yeah.
Watershed pooling area or something like that. We'd have to just analyze it and see what kind of feasibility we have to either use it as something else or have the watershed use it for something else versus what it is today.
I think it's similar to that sub watershed assessment that we did a couple of years ago on, on the Diamond Lake and those kind of things, so.
Yes.
It'd be a study to see what is in there, what needs to be done to make it into anything usable, if there's some uh, fish in there or different plants that we need to put in there, or if it's even feasible to do that stuff, so. I think it's just a study for, and I think why we want to keep this stuff on the CIP, um, is because of it.
Helps you grant.
It helps with ground funding.
And we, we likely wouldn't do any of these projects.
Without the.
Without a grant, cause there's no point in putting all the money forward if we can get a grant for a hundred percent of it or eighty percent of it or whatever, so. If we put it on here and say we're gonna do it, it makes it way easier to say a grant can be.
And the watershed are getting more funding for grants as well, that's coming through the pipeline, so.
We'll continue to keep, we'll continue to keep council updated if we get these. If we do, then we'll move them forward and.
So their watershed is looking at using this for more load or for?
I'm, I'm not sure a hundred percent on the details of it, but that's just.
I was, Jason was here to explain it, cause he explained it really well when he did it the other day. Something about, they said the sub watershed overall for the area has to be assessed every ten years. We haven't done it in twelve years or fifteen years, so. Probably should update it because then the watershed can get updated information. Do what we can, so. Well, thank you so much.
You've ended it.
Yeah, you said I ended it, or if you have any questions, we can go about the next one. We'll plan on having another work session here to do the rest of the budget, so.
All right.